Sorry, I'm on roll call. Councilman DiCaprio.
Mr. President.
Councilman Farren is currently, I believe, on his way. Councilman, uh, sorry, Commissioner Hanad.
Here.
Commissioner who is currently absent. Commissioner Jowdy.
Here.
Commissioner Coback.
Here.
Commissioner Rens.
Here.
Commissioner Tierney.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Palma.
Here.
Commissioners Magnolo.
Here.
And Commissioners Vanudie.
Here.
And I am Commissioner Malillo. Uh, let's please stand for the pledge and Commissioner Coback. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Okay, our next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 12th, 2010. We do have, um, to table the acceptance of the amendments this evening as they're still in the table recorder but not quite yet finalized on the computer. So this time I'll entertain a motion to table the acceptance of the amendments, walked into fourth.
Wait.
By Commissioner Hanad, seconded by Commissioner Coback. All those in favor, say you might as well say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The first public hearing of this evening is a petition, the City of Danbury, by Dennis I Elburne, Planning Director, to amend sections 2B, 4B2, 4D2, and 4G7 of the zoning regulations, add housing redevelopment option to RMF4 and RH3 zones. Commissioner Rens, if you would please read the legal notice and I'll read the planning commission recommendation.
Notice is hereby named that the zoning commission of the City of Danbury will hold public hearings commencing at 7:30 PM on September 28th, 2010, in the council chambers on the third floor of City Hall, 155 Naver Lab, to consider the following matters. Petition of the City of Danbury by Dennis I Elburne, Planning Director, to amend sections 2B, 4B2, 4D2, and 4G7 of the zoning regulations, add housing redevelopment option to RMF4 and RH3 zones. Application for certificate of location approval for a used car dealer's license for Archie's Auto Service, 233 White Street, number J13146. This location was previously approved with stipulation on it. Parties in interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time. Robert C. Malillo, Chairman, published September 20, September 17th, 2010, and September 24th, 2010.
City of Danbury Planning Commission, dated September 16th, 2010, and Robert C. Malillo, Chairman, Danbury Zoning Commission, from Hon. Lee Van Alen Jr., Chairman, Danbury Planning Commission, referencing 83A referral. Petition, the City of Danbury, by Dennis I Elburne, Planning Director, to amend sections 2B, 4B2, 4D2, and 4G7 of the zoning regulations, add housing redevelopment option to RMF4 and RH3 zones. At the regular meeting held on September 15th, 2010, the City of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above referenced petition a positive recommendation for the following reasons. The implementation of these regulations will encourage property owners to replace or repair pre-existing structures that need updating since they will not lose any of the non-conformities that may exist in these structures. The motion was made by Mr. Manuel, seconded by Ms. Hofstetter, and passed unanimously. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Mr. Elburne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dennis Elburne, City of Danbury. Tonight we give you a amendment to various zoning regulations, um, something we're rather proud of, something we've been working on for an extended period of time, because I cannot find any examples of itself where we could just pull, um, information out of a book on model regulations. This is a year in kind of a situation of the case in Danbury, where as you know, in the older parts of the city, we have a number of housing units which are, and they are deteriorated state, um, or substantial disrepair, and there's a difficulty in having those replaced. The difficulty that's placed on the landowner, because if he goes ahead and tears down that building, he must reconstruct it with same with, um, the number of dwellings that need current zoning regulations. Now, why does that create a problem? Create a problem as well, say, for example, he would have 20 units in that building, but if he tore it down, zoning may, hypothetically, allow, say, 16 units. So he loses four units. Um, so it's a disincentive for him to tear down a deteriorated structure and rebuild into a safe, attractive, enclosed dwelling. So that's why we have this recording tonight. It applies to the RMF2 zones, the RMF4 and the RH3 zoning districts. These are two multifamily zones. They are located primarily in the older parts of the urban core of the city. We have not included RMF6 and 10, because for the most part, those zones are located outside the urban core, or they're fairly new developments or relevant new developments. Samples, Timber Oaks, Avalon, and Exiate, Woods, um, Woods. So what is it like? Well, first we give you a, you all have confidence. First, there's a definition that we have. Um, and we try to be as specific as possible. We know though that quite, quite possibly, there will be definitional questions in the future, and so which is why on the next page, we said that the final determination of whether or not a building needs that definition is to be made by planning director or, uh, if that's a need. It excludes two categories of housing regardless of their condition. One, their housing, this housing unit is less than 50 years of age. We figured that in these circumstances, um, what we're really talking about here is maintenance. We're not talking about old buildings that are falling apart. And two, buildings that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places when not offered and intended to destroy historic structures. As I mentioned, under the existing regu, existing regulations, a building is demolished when it's unvaluable to the owner, um, must apply the term of intensity of occupation when it is built. This will allow them to rebuild with the same number of units as they had before. That means that there is no increase in impact. What we do get though, in exchange, is a new building, let's say, modern, stoked dwelling and second. Uh, if you have two or more lots, a lot of lots, and they're common ownership, you may combine those and redevelop both. Simple, a little house. If there's a non-conforming, uh, if the building, if the lot area with building height and coverage are non-conforming, they can duplicate that, but they cannot make them more non-conforming. You have a building, um, a lot narrower, and they'll get off, can't make it even more narrow. Okay, you make it wider, it's going to go down anyway. Um, same with lot area. Um, if it exceeds the height limitation, even builds at current height of existing building heads, can't go any higher. Now, we do have a number of site design standards, and I think, um, some of you, particularly those who've been on the commission for a while, recognize these because they apply to other multifamily zones in the city that are not different, um, including business between buildings. Sett acts, sett acts are pretty much the same as what's required in the regulations as they are. Maximum length of buildings, uh, front yard landscaping, street wall, all of these things apply to other multifamily buildings in the city. So they're not getting a break there. Um, they must comply with whatever the others does. Um, we are giving them something that will break on onsite parking, especially where there is visitor parking and a public parking facility within 500 feet of the lot. Uh, they can count those as meeting their parking requirement. Um, why? Because we're hoping that we're going to get larger units of this. You know, we've got a lot of situations where people have bought over the years, they've been on homes, they're once, were once very nice, and chop them up and they'll come in and stop and will be, I've called overcrowded, and I don't want to encourage that, but I do want to encourage larger, larger units. So if I intend now I have to require, so parking for the rest has to be onsite, because this is a problem that we face in the city. We have streets that are clogged with cars, we have parking in the front lawns, even though they're legal, that sort of thing. Um, so we still have to meet those requirements on curbs and mess and sidewalks and driveways. If they're deteriorated or they don't exist, they happen in a right of way, they have to meet, uh, the departments of the highway department, like everyone else. They have to be served by municipal sewer and water, and I think, you know, almost every guy, I can't imagine a case where they wouldn't be, because again, this is the urban core of the city. And one place where we did get is on open space. We have no such requirement of 500 square feet per unit. We're giving on that, why? Again, I won't encourage them. So that's the question. And, uh, our hope is that it will be incentive for developers to tear down some of these ugly buildings that we all know of and replace them with tracks.
Questions for Mr. Elburne?
Uh, Mr. Elburne, regarding height, you said that, um, that they've instructed the same height.
No, they can't exceed the existing.
Fake.
If they are non-conforming, if it's higher than what's allowed, let's say it's 40 feet that is the perfect line, they can go up to that, but they can't, can't go.
Okay, because we changed, did we change the plot? Do you hear the building, did you change that? Okay. I'll see if you can see. Okay. Uh, and then the other question is, the open space, again, if you can go with that, if the open space requirement has changed within the last 50 years, what are you, what position you have?
Well, it hasn't changed. It's, uh, right now we require 500 square feet per unit. And what I want to encourage is flexibility in design on what would be in many instances a tight development set. And I don't want to, and I'm also not encouraged larger units, and that open space requirement, when you're trying to build at a density that exceeds the zoning regulations, involve this space in the empty parking.
Thank you. And then finally, while you're looking to encourage large units, we don't have any guarantee that.
No, no doubt.
That would happen, but is there anything right here that says that they cannot go as small or as previously existent? Would that be?
Well, it wouldn't be, and I don't know why they would do that, because they cannot, because what they want to do is they don't want to maximize the number of units to what they have.
Or, or units, but not square feet, just.
No, I meant square. I meant square. Have a small building. But if it's a small building, you don't have to have that.
True. Thank you very much. Good job.
Any further questions? Mr. Hanad.
Yeah, in terms of density, we talk about if one, if the one lot contains, uh, two units, uh, one is deteriorated, one is not, um, would there be, let's see if I can structure this question, uh, would there be any situation, if you see any situation where someone would rebuild the one that's deteriorated and then let the next one deteriorate so that it doesn't lose any, uh, any space? So you have a nice new building next to one where he's just kind of waiting for that to, to become deteriorated and then say, oh, okay, now I can rebuild because I won't lose my building. Understand my question?
I do. I don't know anywhere around that. If he's going to let a building deteriorate, he wants it to deteriorate.
If he was willing to rebuild them, both, but one was deteriorated and one was not, there's no incentive for him to rebuild both at that time. He'd let one deteriorate.
I'm not around on this.
Okay.
I can't freeze it in its current condition.
Any further questions?
Wish I could say you've got to keep it in really tip-top shape for the, for infinity.
Additional questions for Mr. Elburne? Thank you, Dennis. So anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Mr. Elburne? Are you speaking in favor or in opposition? Or neutral?
I vote, do I agree?
Just wanted to just. Is it under opposition? That's what I was.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's what I mean.
I'm thirteen, living in Danbury. Um, I, I got this today, and I went over it today, and before I start, let me just, for the record, um, inform you that I manage property in these zones, and this, um, these amendments that were, were benefiting personally immensely. This is one of the problems that we, that's a lot of property that is down there, um, property deals deteriorate. You know, we reach a point, a profit point, where you can make a certain amount of money before you can build a unit that's non-conforming, pre-existing, but at some point, you think it might be better to tear down the building if you can, because you, you regulate, so maybe it'll, it's true, it's true. It's a support, I ask you, so you just keep moving along, and it is alive here that would probably lead people like me to make that jump, you know, and actually, we would still have the same amount of our hearts that we did, uh, that we did have before the, before the 2010. You know, but make no mistake, this is a big change. One of the reasons why we modernize zoning is to, you know, to stay in performance with modern issues of community, and this is a, it's only a get out of jail card in the sense that you return the clock back and kind of ignore modern zoning if you're allowed to, with non-conforming, pre-existing property, to simply go back and rebuild the way that you would have been able to do at the zoning regulation. It's a big deal. It's a big deal with the developers. I, I'm not sure the benefit to the community is as, um, as optimistic as the, as the petition claims. I, I can see some problems, but, you know, I'm very happy that Dennis included historic properties in this, since it's a big deal in Danbury, a lot of it's private, a lot of these are private, they've been, sort of, your partners, many years, and it's certainly private, within a generation after we built, mostly, we built 80, 90, so like, 1910, 1920, before we wanted to build. And they've been operating as such for almost 100 years. I would hate to see a race to the bottom in the sense that now they don't have to renovate by Victorian, just rip it down and build a bottom box. That, that may be more efficient inside, and maybe, uh, have a better organization, it's kind of, but there's probably going to be a loss in that neighborhood. But if a city like Danbury has recognized the value of advanced architecture, I, I think it's also recognizing at this point some of the older, uh, Victorian, it's on Juggler's, and plus, and division and places like that. I, I would like to see, even if, um, buildings have not yet been recognized as architecturally or historically significant, I would like to see perhaps a intermediary that can take another look at this application. So if I come forward with a, with a building that I think is falling apart, and I, I go to you guys and say, well, while we do this, somebody might want to say, hey, hold on a second, it may indeed be falling apart, if you do this, we're losing what we consider to be something fairly aesthetically significant. Is there a way that you can redo what you need to do and still make the building, and we still do that? I mean, if you do put something up there. And there's also a couple of lessons I've learned, you know, on this. I'll refer to last time, you've got in, this is on page, this is on, this is on 4G7C4, uh, you've got the number of dwelling units approved for the site may be less than the maximum otherwise permitted above, when determined by the Department of Planning and zoning to be necessary to accommodate requirements for parking setbacks and other provisions of these regulations. I assume that means that just because you have this issue doesn't necessarily mean you can go ahead and do this. I, I think what this is, is that there will be some oversight of this process through the building, uh, the tenant department, and I would like to ask you to speak on that in rebuttal. Um, I guess number five here, it says street wall, this, I didn't understand this law, the extent feasible, one or more residential buildings should be located adjacent and close to the front lot lines in such a manner that creates a street wall extending across the entire front width of the lot exclusively over through the side areas. I think, perhaps, we're going to go through that, let's speak on that one, I don't exactly know what this is talking about, um, how that's going to work. But basically, my issue with, like, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's in a lot of cases necessary, but I, I would like to see, uh, an architectural review board or at least somebody coming in here to make sure that the people don't start snapping up a cheap Victorian to tearing down a building, uh, boxes, so that it doesn't, because right now we can't, and we have to, I visited Victorian, it's cost me half million bucks for three units, a lot of money, it's over a hundred thousand per unit, and it would have been a lot cheaper to tear it down and build a box. But when I got through with it, it's a beautiful house, it's going to be beautiful for the next 75 years, and it's a prime location. Everybody sees it's a prime location. And, and I think that to lose something like that simply because we've got some new regulations, and make no mistake, for, for those who are building will take advantage of it, it, it's hard to sit down with your family, even with, uh, your family, people like me, and say to them, you know, we can do this for 250, but I'd like to do it for 500 because it's pretty. It, it's hard to make that argument in a family business, that, you know, if we look, we're all, you know, follow-up people here, and they're just going to look at it and say, look, I know it's pretty, if we do it for 500, it's, it would be better if it was completely reduced. So if you could work that, you know, like, I would, like, well, you, you for a little bit more, or something, I would do a little bit more. But again, as with, it's, I like a lot easier, just figure it out. You know, and I'm, I'm kind of arguing against my own self-interest, but, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Elburne. Do we have any questions for? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody speaking in opposition to this petition? Anyone speaking in opposition to this petition? Anybody speaking in opposition to this petition? Mr. Elburne, do you have any rebuttal comments or?
First of all, don't forget that this applies only to deteriorated housing. If, if housing is sound, uh, they're not going to get approval from us. And how do I define it? A residential building containing dwelling units either occupied or vacant, in which the entire building has been either condemned by the City of Danbury, or is substantially unfit for human habitation, or is in a state of dilapidation, deterioration, or substantial disrepair. And they're going to have to meet every one of those. Every one of those. Um. There was an issue with, um, um, C4. The, the number of dwelling units approved for the site may be less than maximum otherwise permitted above, when determined by the Department of Planning, and to be necessary to accommodate requirements for parking setbacks and other provisions of these regulations. Let's say he doesn't need our requirements for parking, and he's got cars shooting all over the place. And now in order to, in order to do that, he's got to take up more area on that lot to put in parking. That may reduce the number, the, the total number of units that can realistically get in less. Um, so, um, you know, it's not a guarantee that he's going to be able to get those 20 units. He may only get 19 or 18. He may get 20, but, um, we're not going to sacrifice onsite parking, nor are we going to sacrifice setback requirements. Um, C1, street wall. Street wall. This is an existing requirement that we have under, for all the other multifamily zones. Um, what we're trying to encourage is that buildings go across the front of the lot this way and they face the street, and not put in sideways. That's what this does, that's what this requires. Um, yeah, worst-case scenario may happen. I don't know. Um, but we can always change things. Let's take a chance. Um, we know what we're facing now. Somebody has a better idea, other than the city coming in and condemning, helping turn down a building, public housing, you have enough. Okay? Um, but this gives them opportunity to take, again, deteriorated housing and rebuild it into something decent. And decent housing, decent, safe housing is perfect.
Any additional? Mr. Farren?
Mr. Elburne, would, would an example of a building, a building like what you're talking about be on the corner of, like, Osborne and Osville?
Be a good example.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you. And that's, by the way, you brought up a lot, and now we're close to the hospital. Hospital desperately needs decent housing for nurses and in-cans, and that's kind of a gain that you, that the community, um, gets from something like this.
Entertain a motion to either close the public hearing or to continue the public hearing? Mr. Hanad?
Can I make a motion to close this public hearing?
Motion closed by Commissioner Hanad, seconded by Commissioner Farren. Discussion closed on public hearing. All those in favor, signature for saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hanad.
Can I attempt to, uh, make a motion to see if we can bring this petition to, uh, number one in our old business or consideration of possible actions?
Any motion to consider is item number one in our old business, by Commissioner Hanad, seconded by Commissioner Farren. Discussion, I'm moving this to item number one, old business. All those in favor, signature for saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we have our second, uh, public hearing for this evening. This is the application for certificate of location approval for a used car dealer's license for Archie's Auto Service, 233 White Street, lot number J13146. This location was previously approved with stipulation on it, and this public hearing was rescheduled from the August 24th, 2010 meeting. Um, for the record, the legal notice for this public hearing was read into the record earlier this evening. Um, being a location pool, we do not have a planning commission recommendation. Quick little history, just to remind everybody, this is previously approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals when they handled, um, these requests in the past, and they did put a stipulation on it regarding the display of autos, uh, which the applicant will mention, prohibiting, uh, the overnight parking in front of the building. Um, they are seeking to request an upgrade to a used car dealer's license that would not have that stipulation regarding in front of this, um, building parking on it. Also, just for clarification purposes, in discussion with, um, the last, at the last meeting, there was a record, it was requested that we gave some opportunity for the planning department to, uh, look into the possible reasons for restrictions. They did research that, um, and they came back, and I believe there will be some information regarding that research this evening. Is that correct? Um, so we will have that presentation as well at this time. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this petition?
Yes, my name is Frank Sinco.
Yes, my name is Frank Sinco. I'm pinching for my law partner, Peter Scialzo, who is in another land use hearing. Good evening, everyone. The application is fairly straightforward, other than the stipulation that we're seeking to lift. One housekeeping matter before I start, when I was reviewing this with Peter, preparation for the hearing today, we noticed that the name of the applicant is incorrect. And I had, with me is Joe Pieschi, who is the principal of the applicant. And I had him execute an amendment to the application, noting that the correct name of the applicant is Archie's Auto LLC. And the reason, Archie's Auto Service Inc. is a company that Mr. Pieschi used at three fifty-one Main Street. And when they moved over to this location in July of this year, it was under Archie Auto LLC. So I would submit this amendment, which Mr. Pieschi has certified. And hopefully now we have correct information in the application. I have with me a. Okay, yes, and the amendment. All right.
Why swap? It should be Archie's Auto.
Well, yes, and it actually should be Archie's Auto LLC. That's correct. Yes, yes. As I was saying, I have an existing provision, a site line, I have several copies, so with your permission, I pretend. Does anybody need one? Okay.
I think I looked at it downstairs, maybe in the cameras. Thank you.
So if you open that up, you'll see the location is two thirty-three White Street. And as the application notes, at present, on the bottom floor, there are there are two businesses, the Bridge House and Archie's Auto. And the parking spaces, and by the way, this, of course, is owned in CG twenty, which provides for the sale of here property, of course. The parking spaces that are in question are in the front on White Street. And I was talking to Mr. Pieschi before the hearing. And he reminded me that in the back, you'll see a number of spaces. And those spaces are also used by his business. And right now, they're operating as a general auto repair, their general auto repair license. So they have access to the spaces in the back as well. And he was seeking to lift the restriction so that when he is selling used cars, he could put four or five cars in the front. And if I looked, I went down to the site just before the hearing to take another look. And I saw there are a number of businesses that in fact do that. Red Merries Auto Sales, which is on Wildman, you know, the corner, spitty corner to White Street. Up here on the corner of Wildman and White Street. They got autos in the front. And if you go down White Street, you saw the injury auto body and loan loan repair also had parking up front. Before the hearing, we had a conversation with respect to the commission's concern about the request of lifting the stipulation on whatever parking requirements might be pertinent to the general repair license. And I explained that to Mr. Pieschi. And he doesn't believe that should be a concern because of the number of spaces that are available in the back. There is a church, the only people who use that lot in the back is a church. Means that on Monday, the services, those few times are not hours of operation for Mr. Pieschi. They're like, okay. And so he has not only the parking in the back, but also the parking in the side here. The other, you know, and it's interesting that the stipulation, and I just will hear what the history is on that, but the stipulation is with respect to cars to be repaired and not to be left overnight. And Mr. Pieschi's intent is not to put cars to be repaired here, but rather to put cars that are used cars to be salvaged. So I wonder if the stipulation would even come into play. But in any way, if we were working to lift it, maybe that would be a good, you know, part of the history. You thought it might be a sightline issue between White Street and Lotus. And Peter Scialzo, he's got some information with respect to the fact that nineteen eighty-four, Lotus was relocated to the lineup.
Commissioner, I'm going to give you one, I'm going to ask you a question first and just give the commission a little bit of knowledge regarding our conversation that we had earlier before you decided to let the city move forward. Because typically, you would do your presentation, we'd have an opportunity to speak, others speak, others speak in favor, in opposition. Then the city would give theirs. Your rebuttal would be limited to what we presented from this point on. You wouldn't be able to offer any new information this evening. So if you had other information that you wanted to offer this evening, now would probably be the optimal time to do that. But let me also say that in researching this information, I was informed earlier today that staff had noticed or did not notice or recognize that even if we lift the stipulation, the zoning regulations do not, for that zone, do not permit parking. And I'm actually looking for my copy of that. It's in this different package here. But yeah, regardless of what this restriction has removed, you won't be able to store or display motor vehicles in the front yard because that's actually in violation of the zoning regs for the commercial regulations. And then also in conversations with Mr. Harity today, our zoning enforcement officer, it was recognized that there's also a possibility with the storage of used cars in parking spaces would no longer make those parking spaces parking spaces. They would actually be transient spaces and therefore could not be counted as parking. So I'm going to request at the end of this public hearing, if we continue the public hearing, just to allow the zoning enforcement officer to look at the parking scenario for the entire building. Having said that, if we do continue the public hearing, connect this public hearing, you would be able to introduce additional information. So with that, I'll leave the decision up to you as to whether or not you would like to hear the history of the property now or continue with your presentation.
Mr. Pieschi, would you like to?
Tonight, I was much better than well. And the title of the evening, according to White Street, for eight years. And I have, I have a lot of problems with parking space. I shared the parking with the bank here. And now I'm looking to new location. And I have a lot of more parking. Of which I don't want to put the pool of parking for cars for sale. Because I don't have the space for my pool or something. I must be, maybe a balance between how many cars I have to sell and how many cars I have to keep my customers. And also I have the, like, before, I have a lot of spaces in the back. And they share the space with the church. Every Wednesday, and weekend, I park my cars inside the garage. I have built over there, and seven things inside. And you'll be left with cars for repair outside. And in the, this side, so the, the map, it wasn't of the street. I think it's, it's parking for my customers. Or they're getting money, or make the appointment for the repairs, or when you, when a group of cars, or and what in the world, if I, if you want a pool situation, which is waiting, I can allow to put cars for sale in front of the street. Because the problem the, the Mr. Robert told to me in the, in the, is when you have the two parking cars for sale. It is the correct one, if you go by parts, you pull on your port, like you do every day. It's hard to find the parts. It's easier for the rest, because it's the whole part for the car to sell. The whole part is for you. And if you do the money, you want it. And I think I may go to the only thing for that. Because I lived for the city, for eleven years, I drove for the street. And I love finding the air, and this space for business. And it was beautiful there. And the, all the cars, it's part of the, in front of the street, is for repair and not the able to, of maybe waiting for a car. And now, the cars I, I parked in there, and I moved the cars for my whole dealer. And I waited for the, the device, of the cars in a bad state, not in parts, followed off or not. And we need, we need to move to this, thirty-two, three, four, five, six, seven, or one.
Do you have any questions for either attorneys, until Mr. Pieschi? Mr. Ruff?
Yeah, so if you run back to some of the concerns, and interestingly, I want to ask the site on the way through. And there are a couple of cars in front of the establishment. And we have dozens of them right here. And they're not cars for sale.
Commissioner, can you please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got notice, it was P D three back in the back room.
Are these cars for sale or the customers' homes or?
I have a list of cars, maybe, uh, next time I move from our old location. I do, the, the car is mainly for you. Because normally I park them in the back, or I go, go to the rock, to those cars.
It was an exception. Normally, it would be cars there and sell the soli.
Ah, right, I know.
Okay, and the condition of these vehicles, it would be cars for sale, it would be cars for repair with missing tenders or, you know, unsightly vehicles. The other question goes to, there are dependencies. On the source parking buildings, normally there's some agreement between the dependencies, the use of the parking, or has that all been resolved?
Yeah, essentially, I don't think it's okay, but I, I have a meeting, we felt, and then that for me, we allow how we design, how we manage. Before we had the trouble, some of the cars abandoned, and the parking lot, and nobody takes, takes care of that. And we, we also need to be empowered in the letter. For if you have some cars abandoned, in the parking lot, I call the tow company for to manage the part. I, I manage all the parking lots now, for the, for the, three, and the week. And I, I, where it's better, but let's do it.
Additional questions? Commissioner Segal?
Shell, what's the most period you're going to have in one time for Shell?
Any idea, like thirty, twenty? How, how high?
How many for? What's your inventory?
Yeah. Normally, you have the five seats.
Oh, five or six, I don't know?
Yeah, I don't think there is no, we take, only for twenty, thirty, I usually really cheap.
And one of the things that Mr. Pieschi explained to me coming here is that with a license, some of the, a lot of the, in fact, maybe paper transactions, you go along, and somebody falls and you're kind of brokering a sale. And you know that it's surely a difficult possession of the car. That, that very.
Yes, also, I sold the cars in Main Street, now we, we don't have them anymore. And they, yeah, sometimes, sometimes I'm always trying to smell, and I get to the helping. And they still, we've been holding the cars, and like, it's me, it's all me, and I'm waiting, waiting for them to start to show.
Additional questions? I have one. This is actually in reference to the parking. When I look at the, at the paperwork submitted with the application, I don't know if this was our paperwork or one news supply. But it shows your, this property location and the lot number. And then it shows that this is a different lot number, it's a different parcel of land, which actually fronts Meadow Street. But yet you're showing the parking spaces existing all the way down Meadow Street. Is that, is this a joint parcel or is it two separate parcels? This is what I'm looking at right now.
It's a joint parcel, it's a lot, it's, like, drives, has a side wall. And the side is able to, you can park in the back and the wall in the side.
So, so this parcel right here, is it a joint parcel or is this part of, is it a separate parcel?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm more concerned, just because when I'm looking at this, I see two, two different lot numbers right here. This is where your property line is. This is another property. But yet you're showing parking here. So I just wanted to find out. But we can get, we can get an answer for that the next hearing, I don't have a problem with that. And my other question would be, is there access from this back of the building to the front of the building without going through? Is there an entrance in the back here? It seems to me, as I remember, there was a wall or a fence here, you couldn't walk.
In this spot, there's a sidewalk, the stairs, the block over you, and the.
So you do have a sidewalk, walking into the front door?
So somebody can pull in here, they can park here, and they can use the sidewalk.
We can turn that off.
So somebody can drive in here, park here, and then they get out of the car, go walk on the sidewalk over here. Is this a product, if you drive through behind the building also?
Okay.
And all the way here, there's a place for, uh, stuff to cover. Yeah, do, like, do other shit, like, to be inside. All right, so a customer can store, can pull in here, park, come in here, park, and walk in.
Uh, just so everybody knows what we're talking about, if you look at the land in front of us, if you pull into the Meadow Street parking lot, they can park in any of those parking spaces, walk down the side of the building on a sidewalk, and still access the front of the building. That was the, just the little pathway that Commissioner Haddad was just pointing out.
Like the meeting, if you want, I think, a couple of three hundred is more than enough.
Do we have additional questions? Commissioner Kovacs?
So you have access to park in, what's this, thirty-one, thirty-nine? You could occupy thirty-nine spaces if you wanted to, or?
No, I don't want, it's quite thirty-nine, it's quite. As the, the line, uh, we have, uh, this house, we have, it's allowed to be four parts.
Okay. Have the marks of the spaces that are marked with, on this?
Yeah, when you see seven, X, part, eight, four parts, going to the house.
Okay.
There's one thing I have, I have, like, behind those, that's all furniture. So he could take that fence back, so you lay it up, right? Then you could, at night, only talk about five or six cars, you can move in there very easily.
Because the, the train, the, but, hey, I, I, I use, use for art, the car, like, the, one car, it doesn't lock, I put, like, things from the body, or from the.
So you can drive that, or through the fence now?
Yeah.
So when we talk about five or six cars you have for sale, then we can't move into that?
Ms. Jelton?
Well, um, all of this is very interesting, but one can do my face to account, is how you're going to get around section 5H2 of the zoning regulations by all commercial zoning districts, which says, no off-street parking, storage, or display of motor vehicles shall be permitted in a required front yard segment. Any use in any commercial zoning district.
Which leading to the discussion of that parking, but probably.
Well, and then redesign the parking form, as I'm, you're concerned, what you're concerned is, how are you going to deal, how are you going to reconcile this?
Right. Which, which, actually, I was looking to get the clarification of, so we would know they exist here regarding this parking.
How are you going to reconcile this?
Additional questions? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody speaking in opposition to this petition? Anybody speaking in answer to this petition? Anybody speaking in opposition? Ms. Jelton.
I reiterate, you must take into account that section 5H2 of the zoning regulations restrict parking of vehicles, you're on your setback, you must address that issue. Unless EBA, you can provide evidence for that. How you need to do it. One, it's probably a good idea that you continue this hearing.
Were you going to address the history of the, the stipulation?
No, I'm not even sure that it matters at this point. Why did they do it that way? I don't know. Do you have a history? We have a history.
Well, I have, nineteen ninety-four, I was looking to The Brachow, and the other works, and EBA was very concerned about those two uses, being the kind of areas that call a park, stay there, unsite. And they discussed, the only way that they felt that could prevent this was put that stipulation on. The chairman said that, you know, if you had a stipulation, it's probably being worked on, or, to be inside or parked in the back, because they didn't want to see it in the front, because top of the block, right up to the sidewalk. I have a minute here, something really brilliant or wonderful about it, that's basically the gist of it. They said it won't happen in the future, and they said, well, if in the future, somebody wants to come back and talk about, well, you can stipulate them, and that was, and now you guys sort of more, because of the restrictions of it, so you have to put it there. But I mean, basically, their concern was that this is highly visible corner of the lot, in the blacktop, on the lot, right up to the sidewalk, and they assumed one of the cars all over the place. Didn't matter if the other people on the street were doing it, they discussed that several minutes. They just said that they didn't want to see this on that side. They had the parking in the rear, they thought that they should either put them in the building, or put them in the back of the building. That's the stipulation, I think.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Elburne?
Commissioner DiCaprio, I'd like to make a motion to consider the public hearing.
One second, just want to give the attorney, is there any additional comments you wanted to make in rebuttal to what was presented this evening, before we would consider continuing the public hearing?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay. We'll have a motion by Mr. DiCaprio to continue the public hearing. Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Spagnolo. All those in favor? Can I know again? Mr. Spagnolo, I'm going to seat you for Commissioner Poop. Recognize you as seconding the motion to continue the public hearing. And at this point, any discussion on continuing the public hearing? All those in favor of continuing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing will be continued until our next meeting, which will be on October twelve. Okay. Under all business for consideration and possible action, we have item number one from this evening. This is a petition of the City of Danbury by Dennis I. Elburne, Planning Director, to amend sections 2B, 4B2, 4D2, and 4G7 of the zoning regulations, add housing redevelopment option to RMM4 and RH3 zones. Commissioner Haddad?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this petition for the following reason, just off the top of my head. Implementation of these regulations will encourage property owners to replace or repair pre-existing structures that need updating, since they will not lose any of the non-conformities that may exist in these structures.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Haddad, seconded by Commissioner Tierney. Discussion on approving the petition this evening? Okay. We'll call, oh, a yes, approves petition. This just needs a simple majority with a positive. Any Commissioner, Commissioner Haddad?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierney?
Yes.
Commissioner Rens?
Yes.
Commissioner Kovacs?
Yes.
Commissioner Jowdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Farah?
Yes.
Commissioner DiCaprio?
Yes.
Commissioner Spagnolo?
Yes.
And I too, oh, yes.
Well, thank you all very much. I have a personal privilege, and I'm.
I have a question for you, Mr. Haddad.
When a determination is made as to whether or not a deteriorated unit, it's not a question of whether or not it's restored value, we have our list. My question is, is it, is it a deteriorated unit? And I'm not going to make that, don't get me wrong, I'm not making that decision on my own. I'm going to take the unit after it, and we'll do a full evaluation. That's how it works.
I have one question for you, Commissioner Haddad, pointed out, that Commissioner Farah arrived during the middle of the public hearing of your presentation. Would he be eligible to vote on this matter, or are you going to see all of this place?
It wasn't here, it wasn't this week.
He came in during the middle of the program. Okay. So at that point, I will, I will see Commissioner Palmer, Commissioner Farah.
If I can interject, I came in about three minutes after he began. I was, I wasn't recognized when I first came in by the chairman, but I did come in at seven thirty-seven.
I think the question arose as though that the, from the beginning of the public hearing, the beginning of the presentation, you were impressed before, that was the question, was the eligibility, you missed a little bit of that. So that was why Mr. Haddad raised a question.
I was only known by when press corporation councils told us that the, that he actually voted, the person asked to hear, to hear the legal notice as it was read publicly.
I, I don't know how you do it. But I would err on the side of caution.
With that, I'm going to just ask Commissioner Palmer to be seated on that petition for Commissioner Farah, and Commissioner Palmer on the motion to approve this petition, would you vote a, aye, aye, or nay? Mr. Palmer votes yes. It still, it still passes, nine to zero. Okay, for reference only, we do have a meeting scheduled for October the twelfth, two thousand ten. We will have at least one item on that, that will be the continuance of tonight's public hearing. Any other matters?
October twelfth.
Okay, with that, I want to take a motion to adjourn, made by Commissioner Rens, seconded by Commissioner Spagnolo. All those in favor, if you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?